I don't see one. I can get one across the track?
No, no, I got you.
Okay, okay.
It's easy, right here in my car.
Alright, good deal.
How you doing?
Alright.
Good evening. Like this one may last more than ten minutes. How're you doing?
Alright, it's ready.
Oh, not too bad.
The main, the main reason they want it is because of the.
Yeah, I mean, we could, they could make these part of the conditions and it looks reasonable. Maybe they fit in with what, let me sit on that copy around and we can make everybody.
Thank you.
I'll hand it out and we should have fun that way.
Yeah.
Things they'd like to include into a clear, where they're getting.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a use permit for FTS, I believe, I think it's called, Highway sixty-five. This is some stuff to, um, the bucket truck company that wants to operate there. They'll agree upon me, probably, fitting into that class of use.
Right.
Just firm and fine.
Sir, yet a, has this, yet another one?
No, it's not.
Okay, something else, okay.
This is something maybe for a conditional use permit just coming up.
Okay.
They want to get more specific with it so they can just get the company that wants to do the bucket trucks. Specific about what they can or can't do.
Gotcha.
You know, these lawyers and things, they always create problems like that, you know?
Yeah, they do.
They, they want specific things, you know?
Outlined.
There's all this fine print and everything.
Goodness, chilly in here. I've got time, I want to run to the bathroom. Hi, Daddy.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, how are you? Keep losing my penis. I think I have one, I just need to do it out. And, uh, I think the one that I had, I left it over in our meeting room. Remind me to put it back. Hey, you keep that, or not? Hello, Mark, how's it going? Is this uses in, uh, one? Isn't she uses in, uh, one?
Ten ultimate.
Hey, how are you? Meeting number fifty-nine for you?
Well, yeah, well, no, actually, this has got to be, because in June, this is each month, that's why.
Uh-oh. Yes.
Really, I really.
Wow. Hi, how are you?
Really?
I'm glad I didn't experience that.
He could have messed it all up, but he gave us the right answer, so we're good. Oh, I know.
Hey, how are you?
Here to roll Jersey? I feel like Puerto Rico, feels great. Exactly. I moved my name tag.
Who gave me this chair?
Here.
Cause I've had a, I had a cold a couple of weeks ago and I haven't yet been able to.
Play musical chairs. Got rid of it, yep.
You can't push on it and find it, you, it's, you only have to sit in it, that's the only way you can find it.
Good thing.
I, I'm, I'm gonna put that in barter like immediately if I'm getting taken off.
We want new chairs.
We need a, we need full attendance here, folks. Somebody get on the phone, who's that?
Delancia is coming, Brooks is coming.
Yeah. He's on vacation.
However, the other two are, they were in our interviews for.
I saw Delancia.
Yeah.
Come in, yeah, we need Brooks too then.
He'll be here.
What, somebody's already given us some, oh, it's all those emails. I got a bunch of those. That's most email I've seen in, in a while, yeah?
And I have snacks down here if we get too hungry.
Oh, thank you very much, good to know.
What's that? In Bushery Way, where's that?
It was? Okay, in Word One, okay.
So we do have Word One.
The other stuff is just gonna.
I said forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I'm saying.
And Brooks just pulled up, so.
Oh.
He was with us in the interview.
Okay, good, oh, you guys interviewed tonight too?
Mm-hmm. The final.
You got your, we got her too?
Got them.
Good, good deal.
Oh, girl, a little checky lock, I'm telling you.
Come on, Brooks. Everybody's microphone's fired up.
And I've talked to two of my friends and they're trying it.
I need to try it.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to tell them what brand you want.
Well, you can substitute too, I mean, like, there's a bill out there, and you can, like, check them if you want them substituted.
Alright, Brooks, you've been very.
So I don't, I don't substitute.
Justin? I'm on it, I'm on it. Get a workout tonight. I got you. Alright, one more.
On their phone.
Yeah, no kidding. No, we don't let you tip them. They, they can't accept tips, I've tried about three times.
Yeah, that's my biggest problem, I have to haul it forever.
Number sixty, cause we had thirteen meetings in twenty-twelve. And, um, and then we've had twelve meetings all the way down here. I missed half of a meeting one night, January twenty-fourteen, my father died.
That's pretty good, pretty good, um, record.
Everybody's microphone ready to roll?
Yep.
Welcome to the November twenty-sixteen meeting of the Conway Planning Commission, thank you for coming. The Conway Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on public hearing items. The City Council will make a final decision on these items using the Planning Commission recommendations as a guide. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within thirty days after Planning Commission denial. If an item is appealed to the City Council, a public notice sign will be placed on the property at least seven days prior to the City Council meeting. A public notice will be placed on the city's website, www dot cityofconway dot org. Items reviewed at tonight's Planning Commission meeting may be considered by the City Council as early as December thirteenth, twenty-sixteen. Alright, Commissioners, let's dispose of the minutes from the October meeting, uh, does anybody see any problem with them? Anything we need to add or subtract or correct? Here, we have a motion to approve the minutes as written from Ann, a second from Brian, all in favor of accepting the minutes from last month's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed, or does anyone abstain? I join with the ayes, so that passes unanimously. And let's move right into the agenda, the first item this evening is the FTS International Services Request for a conditional use permit to allow non-residential uses for the property located at two ninety-four Highway sixty-five North. Now, before I start calling for public comment, let me just briefly lay out the rules regarding time. The first speaker for and the first speaker against will have up to ten minutes. And any subsequent speakers for and against will have up to two minutes each. And our Planning Commission Secretary, Justin Brown, is the timekeeper. So, when you come up, please give us your name and address, and then we will sit back and listen to whatever input you'd like to offer. So, who would like to start the discussion in favor of the FTS International Services Request for this conditional use permit?
Good evening, my name is Doug Meyer, One Sunset Lake Drive, Little Rock. My partner and I own Terraforma, and we are purchasing the property, and we have three tenants, there's five buildings on the location. We have three tenants that have signed either letters of intent or leases based on getting conditional use this evening. One is a national company called Altech, and they basically put bodies on trucks, like boom trucks, that you'll see working on highway power lines. Uh, pretty quiet use, they're renting two buildings, um, any repairs they do will be inside the building, so there won't be any exterior noise. Good company, they've got locations pretty much, well, I think in about eight countries and all over the United States. Another company is called MoMar, which, um, they're located in Bryant right now, or, um, Greenbrier. And they are actually located, um, in a small shop. We know about Fractech and that they were there before, and I, I wasn't part of that, had nothing to do with them, uh, but I understand they had some noise issues. Fractech operated twenty-four-seven, and, um, let's start with Altech. Altech, they said their hours would be seven to five. MoMar, they have, uh, mostly trucks that would leave somewhere between six and seven in the morning. They leave for the day and come back at five or six in the afternoon. So there's almost zero activity from six-thirty to five in the afternoon, it's basically just a couple of people in the office. Again, the only noise they would, the only noise they would make is when the trucks leave in the morning and come in in the evening. Similar to what you hear in town here. And then the third use is, uh, the church where the worship center is up front. So I guess we'd require, three good company, well, I don't know anything really about the church, but the other two companies we're pretty familiar with, very reputable. Uh, both are national companies, um, I see no reason to, I think, um, staff had recommended approval based on a couple of things. One was lighting, one was following the uses, and I think I, I gave you a letter showing what Altech's uses are. They're so concerned about it that they want you to approve it because they don't want to do anything they're not supposed to, uh, and want to tie it to part of the lease. Uh, and MoMar, most of the guys there are locals, so they're very cognizant of noise or any intrusion to the neighbors, so I, I don't see any issues with, um.
So are they expanding, is this different, are they gonna keep the Greenbrier place open, or are they just?
They are not, they're moving, moving to this, they, they have grown, of course, you know, the fracking, everything has slowed down, but they're into a lot of different things. When we were there a couple of weeks ago, they had some people there with ADEQ, so they check them out, make sure they follow all the state and federal guidelines, so they run a really clean operation. You have any questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Meyer?
Altech is the bucket truck assembly company, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So MoMar, MoMar would be the environmental service.
Right.
Gotcha.
Can you give us the hours of operation typically for Altech and MoMar, but are they operating seven days a week or Monday through Friday?
Well, Altech is Monday through Friday, now, I, I don't know if they'll work Saturday mornings, I think unless they'd have Entergy or somebody really wanted them to get some trucks out. I, they told us Monday through Friday, now, they may work Saturday mornings.
Okay.
Um, MoMar, I talked to them today, and they said Monday through Friday, now, that's not to say there wouldn't be an environmental spill somewhere and they'd have to go out, I mean, that's, that's definitely a possibility.
Do you have plans for the truck wash? Is one of, one of these companies?
MoMar, the existing truck wash that's on the, um, west, southwest kind of side? Um, I did talk to them today about that, and they wood wash trucks in there, now, not very often, but they wood wash trucks in there, but, you know, it's, it's an enclosed metal building. So they, they actually wash them inside of the building.
I just think I remember some of the residents having a problem with that truck wash when Fractech had it, I don't remember what it was, but, I'm just, I, if they have a problem, they'll come forward.
On the diagram, you had possible additional building, do you have any other, um, tenants that you're considering?
We do not at this time, there's, there's more property, it's, it's, uh, back to the, uh, behind the other buildings, um, but no, no one, no one we're talking to right now.
Is this church in use right now as a church?
It is not.
Nothing's in use out there.
But it's a, they're local, they're local, uh, the minister is local here.
Do you know what church is looking at it?
Are there any other questions for Mr. Meyer? Alright, thank you, Mr. Meyer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, I'd like to ask if anyone would like to speak in opposition to it? Seeing none, okay, well, please come on up to the microphone.
My name is Sharon Ferguson, I live at Twenty Rolling Hills, which, uh, backs onto the, the old Fractech property. And they were extremely noisy, and it was as if they were banging on drums all day and all night, a lot of light pollution. And, um, that I would like for someone to address, whether or not they're gonna have all of their lights shining up in the air, which totally ruins the night sky. Uh, I, I never had a dark yard again after they moved in there. And, um, other than that, he's pretty much answered the questions, they sound like they won't be that obtrusive. Now, there were other people that talked about the mud from the Fractech, the dust blowing into their houses basically further down. And you're saying there's that empty space behind the buildings, are you talking about toward our area?
No.
Okay, down toward the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so I, I don't think I had that much in opposition, other than the light and the noise, and he's addressed that pretty well. But I did want to say that that is an issue in our neighborhood.
Are there any questions for Ms. Ferguson? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
And, Ms. Ferguson, we will discuss the lighting issue here, uh, in, within, once we bring it back into committee. Would anyone else like to speak against this request? Seeing none, I'll bring it back into committee, what are your thoughts on this, Commissioners?
First off, I think, because this Exhibit C is regards to this, correct?
It is.
Do you want to speak on that real quick?
Well, it was handed to me right before the meeting, but I don't see any real problems with it, it's, um, like you said, a real, more specific laundry list of the things they'll do. And specifically, the Altech Bucket Truck Company, um, it looks to me like it seems reasonable, the, the conditions they've laid out, they, they would like to add those as part of the conditions, and it looks reasonable to me is what, what they're just being more specific in the exact uses that they'll be doing in relation to the bucket truck, construction and building and fixing and repairing and all that. So, when you consider conditions, if this is agreeable to you, I would suggest you add those conditions in with whichever ones you come up with or modify to make it work even better.
Okay.
And for anyone in the audience who may not be aware, this is Brian Patrick, the Director of the Conway Planning Department. Okay, Commissioners, what are your thoughts on this, how do you feel about it?
I have a question for the applicant, um, regarding the Altech and the MoMar, is there any plans for them to be able to do any sort of staging on the property, like storing trucks to be worked on, or, uh, equipment or anything like that?
Well, uh, they, they will have equipment if they are there, I mean, it's, I think that, uh, MoMar has probably twenty pieces of power, I'm, I'm not sure of the exact number, but somewhere in that neighborhood. And then Altech, I think they're not gonna have a lot of excess equipment sitting around if, if that's your concern, I think they move them in and out pretty quickly. But I think there will be times where they may have several units, uh, waiting for the bodies to be installed. They do the work inside the bigger building there, that's the building they're gonna use, but they will have some staged outside, it, while it's in progress, I think.
The, uh, the environmental company, um, they don't do any sort of like environmental remediation, like they would be staging soil or anything like that?
No, no, I think, uh, you, you probably have seen their stuff around as Ramco. That's, that's the name that I've seen on, on some of their equipment, is they, they have it spaced, uh, set around town and everything. But, I don't, that, as far as bringing any contaminated dirt or any stuff like that, I don't think that's, that's not what they do. The name of that, uh, church is Central Arkansas Worship Center, is, is the name of the, the church that we're dealing with.
Thank you, sir.
Alright.
Hey, Commissioners, any other, uh, input on this before I ask for a motion?
I think that it's definitely much better than Fractech and what they were doing there, and I think it's gonna be better for the community, the neighbors, and, and everything else as far as, you know, operation, the noise pollution, all that. So, I think it's, it'd be a step up.
I would suggest that we limit the, uh, the two buildings other than the church to the, to the proposed LCs, like I have another thing, I forgot, I have a bid on that one.
Are you looking under the staff recommendations where it says allowed uses shall be in specified areas? I know, that's not what I was looking at.
Number five.
You can change, you can change the entities but not the use?
Right.
Are you saying you can't change the entities?
I kinda liked it when we had it where it went with the entities so that we could revisit it, if they want to sell or something, and it's not locked down, this property always. And it's not locked down, this property always forever will be.
Just out of curiosity, how, how long a lease are they signing?
Um, Altech's ten.
Altech's ten and MoMar's five.
You're ten, oh, okay.
And they have extension options?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that if we do any sort of hours of operation, we have an exception there about, you know, except for emergencies or out of ordinary events.
Right. Because that's the only way that motion's going to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's make a motion and then talk about these recommendations. So I'll make a motion to approve with all the recommendations that are shown on here. Within, let's change number five to, um, I'm okay with leaving the church entity changing, but the business entities have to come back before the commission. Um, yeah. And Exhibit C, you don't have to get about it.
Okay, so we have a.
Okay, yes. And we'll amend the conditions to include the uses on Exhibit C. Do I need to read all these?
No, no, that's okay. All right, we have a motion from Ann to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second from Brooks.
Ann, can you?
It was a split second ahead.
Ann, can you specify your hours of operation that you recommended in Condition one?
Oh, I'm sorry, seven a.m. to six p.m., I believe is.
They, they specifically asked for six.
Yeah, MoMar was doing six.
Six a.m.?
They'll leave between six and seven.
Oh, that's right.
So I think six to six.
Six to six. That is right. But they're not here. They're not represented here, so. There's a, there's a piece of property, really, a house, really, really close. Right there, but they didn't come, so.
Right.
Six, six it is.
Okay, Brooks, are you okay with seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is, before we vote, is there any discussion of the motion, any questions about the motion?
And to address the ladies' lighting issues, all, that's one of the recommendations and one of the conditions. All the lighting will be downward and shrouded. So, there you go.
Any other discussion of the motion before I call for a vote?
So, I know I'm being a sickler, but just to clarify on the hours of operations, it's Monday through Friday, six to six. With the exception of emergency situations. That's just for clerical clarification.
For emergencies from MoMar? No, not the church.
Not the church, so sorry. For the, for the other two businesses.
They might, they might be there six to noon on Saturday, um, Monday through Saturday.
Well, that changes it. Okay, Monday through Saturday.
Brooks, are you willing to second that?
I'm, I'm good with Monday through Saturday.
It bothers me that those neighbors didn't show up.
We make them start at eight on Saturday. And it's just trucks leaving, coming and going at six o'clock, right? There's no loud, there shouldn't be any.
Yeah, let's do, I would say, eight o'clock on Saturday, eight to six on Saturday.
Eight to twelve, I think he said.
Wait.
And it is just trucks coming in and out.
Could you go eight to twelve or eight to six?
Unlike it would be really.
Eight to Saturday? Okay, Brooks, are you willing to second that? Eight to six on Saturday?
Yeah, I'm willing to.
Okay.
Let's don't do anything before eight on Saturday.
If that's, if that's something that's, okay, yes.
Okay, so we got a motion to approve with the hours of operation being six to six, Monday through Friday, eight to six on Saturday? And that the church entity may change, but that the business entities may not without the new business applicants coming before the commission?
Right, and the church hours are not restricted.
Okay.
Correct.
All right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote now unless there is any other question about the motion. Okay, all in favor of Ann's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? And does anyone abstain? I join with the ayes, so that passes nine to zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Cole Klager request to rezone the property at two sixty Highway sixty-five north from A one, which is agricultural zoning, to C two, which is commercial, neighborhood, commercial district. Who would like to begin speaking in favor of this rezoning request?
Hi, I'm Leah Cole Klager, owner of JR's Hobby Horse. My home address is eighty-eight Castleberry Road in Greenbrier. We are requesting to have this rezoned. Um, as y'all may know, we've been a building there for thirty-two years, retail store, um, family business. And it was a remodeled building when my dad started it thirty-two years ago. And it's time to remodel again. So what we're proposing to do is to rezone it so that we can build a new building. And eventually we'll replace the old building with that. Business will be the same, traffic will be the same. We don't really foresee any big changes. It's just time for an update, so.
Where do, I'm sorry, where do you propose to put the building?
Um, it's gonna, it's gonna be, um, kind of to the south of this building. I don't know, there's an old arena out there. It used to be an arena, there used to be a barn, it had fallen down, um, we've removed. It's going to be up close to the arena, where the arena is now.
Okay.
So a little bit more off the road, but so that we can have more parking in the front. Like, we have a lot of horse trailers and big trucks and trailers coming in and out of there off of sixty-five, and it's not very inviting, how it is right now. So we would like to open that up and make it more appealing for them to pull in.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Cole Klager?
You going to keep the arena?
Yes, we are keeping the arena. We are.
And how soon would you like to start construction on this?
Um, we would like to start as soon as possible because our updates are getting to, to our existing building and are starting to pile up on us. Um, we're in the process of getting the development review started now. Um, we have our plans done, so we're working on all of that. I would say with the permit process, within the next four to six weeks, if that's possible. They've just started the development process, so.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Cole Klager? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to it? Seeing none, I'll bring it into committee. What are your thoughts on this one, commissioners?
Perfect use of this land. It's the exact same as what's next to it. I'm making a motion to approve.
Hey, we have a motion to approve from Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Wendy. Is there any discussion of the motion before I call for a vote?
I'm going to hate to say the old building though, it's been there a long time. I don't remember when your dad started that, so.
Hey, all in favor of approving this rezoning request, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Or does anyone abstain? I join with the ayes, so that passes nine to nothing. The next item up tonight is the Covington Conditional Use Permit Request for General Retail. A conditional use permit for jewelry store in an I-three industrial zone, which is at six fifty-five Dave Ward Drive, Suite one oh two. Who would like to begin the discussion in favor of this request? Go ahead.
I'm Jason Covington, forty-six thirty Bay Hill Drive. I'm with Covington Properties. Um, we're asking for a conditional use for a jewelry store. And it's in a building we've remodeled, we own seventy acres on that side of the street and twenty-five acres on their side. Um, we, we didn't think about the zoning when we ran it to them and we reamed the building. And then, uh, when we got the building permit, it didn't come up, it didn't come up till we went to get a sign permit. By then, all the remodeling was done, they've spent a lot of money and moved in. Um, they've got a fine jewelry store in there. Our other tenants are Staff Mark, Doctor's Office, and a dentist's office is going in the building, we're building next to it. And, uh, I think it'll just be a fine addition to over there. And we're trying to kind of take that from industrial to mixed uses on that side of the street. You have any questions for me?
No, it looks good, it's a good looking building.
Thank you. It's a Leans Fine Jewelry.
That, that facility is open and operating today as a business.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Covington? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit request? Would anyone like to speak against it? Seeing none, I'll bring it into committee. What do you feel about this one, commissioners?
It's clean.
Yeah, I mean, it looks good. I, I just figured it's already what it needed to be, so.
Wouldn't know.
Yeah, uh, I would, I would make a motion to.
Hold on just a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Brian, could you just elaborate a little bit on this, the staff, staff comments? You say that, uh, granting the conditional use permit for the entire business was not, would not be a good idea, but just for the jewelry store.
Yeah, I mean, the, the request was specific, but not with specific because it, it talks of, um, general retail. And we're talking, and, and the, the legal description was for like the whole acreage. So if you granted a conditional use permit for retail, and you can do it if you want to do it that way, but it'll be for the whole lot of the whole property, so any more future buildings built could have retail in, all that kind of thing. Um, one thing about this property is it's owned I-three and our development view controls are a little bit relaxed in I-three in that you can build a metal building, basically you just have to dress up the front of the building, make your landscaping, your parking on the front look better. But the backside could still be gravel and industrial-like, that kind of thing. So, um, I mean, if the area's changing to C-three or, or C commercial use, they should probably seek a commercial zoning. Right now, the things that are in there are offices which are allowed by right in I-three, so there hasn't been a problem. And we found out about this when they came to ask for a sign permit. We don't have buil, business licenses, so it's always kind of whack-a-mole us in a way to figure out what's going on out there. So anyway, they, they asked for a sign permit, we're like, well, this is a retail operation going on, so really you need to get a conditional use permit because in an I-three zone, in order to do retail, you have to have a conditional use permit. So anyway, so that's, that's the reasoning to somewhat limit it to just a jewelry store. And as far as how big, if they become a, you know, five acre jewelry store operation, so be it. But that's the condition there is basically saying that it just is limited to this jewelry store operation or a jewelry store operation, as it's written there. It could also change, you know, from Fred's Jewelry to George's Jewelry or whatever. But it does limit it to that use and not just blanket the whole thing to be used as retail. So that, that's the reasoning behind that.
I've driven by there a couple of times, but I don't remember like the landscaping and stuff. Do we need to address that here? Is it not what it should be for that type of zoning?
It's okay for what it is now. I mean, and they're, they're planning on another building and that's going to meet our current standards. The building that was there, um, I remember one of the council members called me up one day and they said, "Did George Covington build a new building out there and didn't go get a permit?" I was like, "No, it's the same building, they, they fixed it all up, it looks great." You know, they've done, done a great job on it. Uh, but it, you didn't notice it before, it was just an old metal building standing there. Now it's a real nice building. It's a real asset now where it wasn't before. So anyway, so all that's grandfathered more or less the way it is right now. I mean, they just dressed up to, to fascia and all that kind of thing. So that doesn't get into our development view, but anything out there new will get into that. So I'm okay with not getting into, you know, the landscaping and things on, on this building. But in the future, they, they do, they will meet our, our current standards.
Are there any other questions for Brian?
Somebody's making a motion for it.
Well, not, he started to, but.
I was going to, but she had other questions, so I'll go.
What are your thoughts on this?
I suggest here again, we limit it to the, to the tenant and the suite because I don't want this to be used as a backdoor way to get around the fact that it should have been.
Agreed. And I do not believe we have to put hour of operation limitations on a jewelry store.
There's nothing around there that's going to bother the jewelry trucks in and out there.
Not at all.
Hmm, have to check that schedule out.
Who would like to make a motion?
Well, Brian was in the process of making.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion, um, to approve with just the recommended condition two.
Okay. Uh, we have a, we're a motion for Brian to approve with the second recommended condition. Is there a second to the motion? Delencia?
Yeah, well, just for that jewelry store.
Just the jewelry store, okay.
Okay, and are you fine with that, Delencia? Okay, so we have a second. Uh, is there any discussion of the motion before I call for a vote? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone against? Does anyone abstain? I vote with the ayes too, so that passes nine to zero.
Thank you, guys.
The next item on the agenda is the Hart Request to Rezone Property located at fourteen oh one Hogan Lane from R-one, which is residential, to O-one, which is general office district. Who would like to begin the discussion in favor of this rezoning request?
I would.
All right.
My, my name's Mitch Hart. I, I live at fourteen oh one Hogan Lane in Conway. That's my personal residence, as it exists today. So I'll be speaking in favor. Um, by way of, of introduction, oh, I don't know. Real estate reception's been long. I haven't spent much time talking to y'all. I'd love to talk to y'all more. That means something good's happening to Mitch Hart. Anyway, it's a, I own Century Twenty-One Donovan Hart in Conway. Also, I own a small development company. So by way of introduction.
We'll just take these and pass it down.
I'm going to tell Carter Chee, there you go. But, oh, I'm going to share the, just the zoning overlay. I was always, the city does such a good job on their website, just steal stuff from them. So that's just stole that off the city website. It's just a zoning overlay showing a little bit larger version of probably what's in your, in your hand now.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm the, uh, I'm the current owner operator of Century Twenty-One. Uh, who's ever been to Century Twenty-One, raise your hand in Conway. Okay. Who knows where Century Twenty-One is? Can take me, walk me right to it. One, two. All right, you're being honest, right? I mean, people, they don't know where my office is. All right, my office is at five seven five Hark Rider. Who can get there now?
Oh, I can.
Yeah.
Maybe. Jade China.
Oh, I can get there.
It's embarrassing, I have to tell people that my office is next to Jade China for them to find me. All right. So as a real estate company, what does that mean to my business if no one knows where my office is? You know, I can office from anywhere. And as our industry's progressed, uh, I say progressed, as we've gotten more technology oriented, as we've, uh, we use smartphones and computers and, oh, all my stuff's on the cloud now. Uh, about a year ago, I sent my agents, basically became virtual agents, what we call virtual agents, and I pretty much sent them home with a Canon color copier scanner fax machine, okay? So majority of my agents, uh, work from home, okay? At this point, um, I've been working from home for, I was somewhere between five or ten years. It, it, well, five to eight years. I lived at this address since March of two thousand and eight. I've recently rented my office, a little over half of it, to a church off Hark Rider. And long-term, I plan on, currently, we, we still have a place to office there, but long-term, I would like to probably lease the whole entire office and, uh, become a virtual real estate company, okay? So that's the long-term plan for my office. Uh, what that means is we have to have a, a small landing spot, I guess. What that means is, we have to have a small landing spot, I guess, to meet clients, and when we have to meet clients, and I have to have, by regulation of the state, I have to have a place to hang a sign. I have to have a sign and physical address on a real estate company, okay? So additionally, in addition to the technology, all of our, a big part of our business is getting signatures on real estate-related forms, often acceptance forms, listing agreements. We have a lot of forms in real estate. At this time, all of our forms are available online, and they're also available where they can be signed through an e-signature process. So I go online, I fill out the information, I present it to a client electronically, through email, they click on their name, they click on the date, and we have a basically legal contract. So we hardly get any traffic at all to our office at this point. The way we do our business, everything's online, and our current files are in the cloud, and so that's kind of a, oh, it's taken a long time to get to where we are, but basically, that's where the real estate industry is today, okay? All right, fast forward to present. Oh, I have a small development company called Hart Land Development. I do land development around town, and I was a developer of kind of, I'll say some things that probably are kind of stupid. You're welcome to ignore those, but I'll probably go into more detail than I really need to, all right? By training, I'm an engineer, and sometimes that can be a fault, but let me take it from here. Looking at the location where my office is on Hogan, just going back and saying, hey, does this meet the criteria of an office location? You know, as a realtor and a developer, I wanted to analyze that, okay? And an analysis of my property brings me to some following points I'd like to make. First thing that we look for is, does it meet the comprehensive plan? That's kind of test one. The city's overall comprehensive plan, I think, was updated last in 2014. And based on the current plan, it's my understanding that I'm in a transitional area where my house is. It's a transitional mixed land use. It allows for multifamily, professional office, and limited commercial uses based on the comprehensive plan. So test number two is, oh, let's take a look at the adjoining properties to see if it's, if my use to be congruent with what's already there. I am surrounded by, on one side, by two sides, by Sunderland Park. It's a really nice, upper-scale subdivision. I have a lot of friends, a lot of good neighbors, a lot of good friends live there, a lot of good friends used to live there. It's really a nice subdivision. And as I, so, and I know I have opposition from some of my neighbors because they were kind enough to tell me. You know, they told me, they called me, they emailed me, that there is opposition to this request. So as I look at the neighborhood, I'm looking at more as, you know, how is this going to affect Sunderland Park? Because I know that's where there's going to be some opposition. So if you look at the handout that I gave you, I kind of wanted to take a really close look at the neighborhood as it exists today. Oh, like I said, I didn't really have anything with, I didn't have anything to do with the way, basically the way it is. I moved in in '08 after all this happened, so everything was there at the point I got there. Oh, if you look at, well, if you look at it north-south like that, what I would like to do is follow what is adjacent to Sunderland Park as you follow it all the way around the entire subdivision on Tyler Street and Hogan, so bear with me.
Mr. Hart, you have approximately two minutes left, just giving you a warning.
Okay, all right, fair enough. We've got Centennial, the convention center starts from the northeast corner, and we have R2 duplexes, then we have a O2 center with a retail overlay for restaurants and a drive-through. Across the street from me is O2, then we have a multifamily apartment complex, then we have a C2, which is a, there's a contractor, an all-state insurance, and there's a real estate company there. Then we have O1, which is, I think, a nursing home. Then we have MF1, are the current neighbors of that subdivision. Number three, I look at, can the road service the property? It's a, Hogan Lane is a major arterial, which is the largest street assignment in the city of Conway. So I feel like, and it's planned, it's on the Conway Loop, and someday it will be upgraded to look similar to David Ward Drive. All right, test number four, what do the neighbors think about it? I've had negative feedback from the neighbors. I have some great friends and neighbors in Sunderland Park. They take pride in their properties. They're good neighbors. When you draft this subdivision, it shows. I think regardless of what happens today with this request, I know it will continue to be a great neighborhood because of the people and the pride that they show in their, in homeownership there. And they keep their properties up, and they remodel, they replace. It's a wonderful subdivision. I think a couple of things that make the features of my property acceptable for rezoning. All my neighbors will be, it'll be in their backyards, not their front yards. We have privacy fencing in place. My house design is congruent with the neighborhood. It looks like it's a residential house. It looks residential, so everyone thinks it's residential. I don't plan on making any changes to my house. Majority of work will be done back behind in my shop. I have 600 square feet of heating-cool space in my shop. I'm asking for conditional use to continue to live in my house.
Mr. Hart, that's time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions from the commission for Mr. Hart?
There's a brick wall behind that building where you would have your office, right?
There is a privacy fence and a brick wall on one side and a privacy fence on the other.
You mean like a wooden privacy fence?
Yes, wooden privacy fence, six-foot privacy fence.
And it's just right there behind that building?
Yes. It's directly to the, to the, oh, to the east and to the north is a brick wall that joins the strip center.
But on that other side, there's a brick wall on that other?
Yeah, one side there's a brick wall, that's correct.
And are you, how many employees are you talking about having here? I mean, it's just going to be you?
Basically, my development company is myself and one employee. My real estate company have like all six, six full-time agents, and they work from home. So I don't plan on seeing them too much because we're virtual agents, and all that number may change historically, right? It may go up or go down, but there'll be a very few number of employees and very little traffic based on the way we do our business today.
So you don't have any support staff for your real estate?
I have one, I do have, I do have one receptionist, yes. I do have one receptionist. My office manager works in Greenbrier. I don't, you know, I'm not sure right now. The receptionists may or may not be part of this. I'm not sure yet. Because they can answer the phone from some, from their home, you know. We have a Ring central allows us to forward our phone from anywhere. So I'm not sure if that'll be part of this or not.
What type of signage are you planning on using, and where will it be located? You said the shop is behind, right?
Behind, right.
So where are you planning on putting your sign, and how do you want to drive traffic to it versus what you said about the other location?
I got you. I'll have to have a sign out front that makes a sign ordinance, and also have to have a sign on the building front.
That'd be in front of the house that looks like, that'll be in front of the house, and then you'll have one on the actual building?
On the actual building, correct.
Are you opposed to putting in some landscaping or taller fence or something like that to give those people? I see there's a couple of pools right there, kind of, I mean, I don't picture what you're doing being super loud, but would you be opposed to doing something like that?
Oh, I'd be happy to visit with them about fencing options. Oh, I'm not, can't promise you a big brick wall, but I can...
No, yeah, but maybe a taller fence than six feet.
We can improve upon what we have there. I'd be happy to visit with the neighbors about it, and they've already offered to visit with one neighbor, two neighbors about it, I guess.
Okay.
What about planting trees if that's?
Eh, I think I need some, I'm okay with planting trees. I could actually use some back there. I've had some trees die, and I need to, I need to replant, but I don't want to replant. I'll just have to talk to the neighbors about that because they've all got pools. I don't want my leaves to go over, my tree leaves to go. I have to be careful about what we do there, but I would be happy to work with them on landscaping.
How many parking spaces do you currently use at your existing location?
I don't plan on adding any. I currently have, I don't have strip parking, and I have a lot of concrete. I'd probably, you can easily park 10.
10 people at the new location?
Yeah, easily 10, probably can get up to 20.
Are you planning on adding on?
I'm not going to add any.
Any structural changes to what we see in this?
No, not adding anything. No, I'm not adding any, but currently I have somewhere between 10 and 20 places. Hell, if you add, if you include the whole, the whole property, there's a minimum of 20.
If you're having a pool party?
If I'm having a pool party, that's correct. That's correct. No, by the way, I have great neighbors. I have no problem. I have good neighbors, and there's really good people over there.
I've got a couple of questions on, from where you're, I guess it's the shop in the back to the neighbor's property. You know the distance between?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet, okay. And then, do you plan on, with this rezoning, and how long do you plan on being at this place with this business? I mean, is this a long-term?
It's indefinite, as far as I know. I don't have any interest in selling or, you know, at some point, I'm going to sell. I have, I'm not marketing my property, never have, and I don't plan on leaving. You know, I don't want to, you know, you don't want to go through many make-your-neighbor mad experiences, right? So I would love to get some type of general office, though in case I sold it to a general office. I don't think that would probably be any different than me, you know, a professional office being in that building. That's my opinion. Y'all may take, you may take a different look at it.
Depends on what it is coming in.
Yeah, but it, it, oh, it would be office, right? It would be no worse than what an office provides, and I, I don't know. Honestly, I've lived next to the, oh, I don't know, seven, eight years now, I've lived behind the strip center over there, and I don't know what I thought it was going to be like, but they have been really good neighbors. I mean, I haven't had any problems. I haven't had to call police, haven't had to call zoning enforcement code. I haven't called any city to complain at all about them being a neighbor, and they're much more intensive than office. I mean, they've got two full-time restaurants with liquor licenses, and I thought I'm against liquor, don't get me wrong, but, you know, that type of neighbor you would think would generate problems, and being in their backyard, I haven't, I live in their backyard, and I haven't had any problems at all with them.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hart?
I have a few questions. Is your lot actually a part of the Sunderland Park subdivision?
This lot, 99.
That whole piece of property?
Yes.
Does the restrictive covenants for Sunderland Park allow you to have an office on this lot?
I'm not under their restrictive covenant.
It's not, but it's not under their restrictive covenant?
No. No, it was the first building built there. It was built in '92.
Some of the photos, it showed that there were already some signs up there. Are you already using that shop as an office, or why are those signs up there?
Oh, real estate signs? Oh, they're inventory for putting on properties for sale.
Is there a reason why you're asking for rezoning versus just a conditional use to be able to do the business out of the shop?
I went to the city and asked them, you know, what would be required, and this is where we ended up, through the zoning books.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hart?
Yeah, so I just went through this process of selling and purchasing a new home in the last two weeks, over the past month or so. And while I did sign some of the contracts and some of the pages electronically through e-Sign, there were still a lot of the pages and a lot of meetings that I had to take at my realtor's office, or at my house, or at Starbucks, or wherever we decided to meet at that time. So I'm not sure that the e-Sign and virtual realtors eliminate the foot traffic that you're going to have to have.
I'll have limited now. They'll be, they'll be limited, but, and of course, a lot of times, we meet people at other locations as opposed to our office, too. So, but no, there'll be some traffic. I'm not denying that at all.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hart?
The business is not limited. Is the business limited to real estate, or did you mention something in your?
I have a real estate development company that I would like to also office there.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Hart.
I want to plan on being, continue to be a good neighbor, too. Thank you.
Here's the rest of your business card, sir.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this rezoning request?
I've got a question.
You have another question for Mr. Hart?
Does this include all of these, or are we just talking about one D specifically?
Right now, we're just about 14. Just went through the zoning.
That's what I just wanted to know.
One D, yeah.
Okay.
Who would like to start again the discussion in opposition to this? And let me mention again, the first person gets up to 10 minutes. Everyone else gets just two, up to two minutes each. So who would like to start?
No, 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 I'm going to walk back in short time. Good evening. My name is Joe Pruitt. I live at 1410 Sunderland Park Drive. I appreciate, Mr. Lewis, you asking who else would like to speak. I'd like everyone from Sunderland Park Subdivision to please stand up at this time, please. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been a resident of Conway, Arkansas, my entire life. I've been a resident of Sunderland Park for nine years. Mitch is absolutely correct. He is an outstanding neighbor. It's our prayers that you keep him just that, an outstanding neighbor. I want to share a letter with you that our POA board sent to all, sent to you all, just in case some of you might have missed it. I think it sums up some of our concerns. Dear Conway Planning Commission, the residents of Sunderland Park subdivision have been notified by Mr. Hart, owner of 1.64 acres at 1401 Hogan Lane, requesting a zone from R1 to O1. For the following reasons, the Sunderland Park homeowner strongly opposed this change and asks that you deny Mr. Hart's request. Loss of privacy, enjoyment, property value, and increase in noise and safety issues. Mr. Hart shares a property line with six Sunderland Park properties and sits very close to others. I may very well be the closest of those six, and you'll see in a photo in just a moment. He has requested an extremely generous zone change that would allow him to choose from 75 different uses. Today, it's just a quiet office. Tomorrow, it could be something different. Sunderland Park was created approximately 15 years ago and is a very well-established residential neighborhood. Many of us purchased our homes there with reasonable belief that our property value would be protected and that we were purchasing homes in a well-established residential area. Our Property Owners Association and subdivision bylaws restrict property use in the neighborhood and protect the value of our homes. Although Mr. Hart is not a resident of the neighborhood, his property, even with the name Sunderland Park attached, Lot 99, is surrounded by our lots, and will greatly, his use will greatly impact our property, and in turn, the entire neighborhood. The future enjoyment and value of our property would depend on how Mr. Hart chooses to use his property. His request, if granted, would give him a huge array of possibilities. Property values around Mr. Hart's property could decrease, which could impact our whole neighborhood. Additionally, many property owners have invested in outdoor areas, as you've seen, pools, fire pits, outdoor kitchens, and other amenities. The presence of a business on the other side of a fence would greatly decrease the enjoyment and value of these additions. Some of the O1 zoning, rezoning uses could even pose other safety concerns for our owners. As you can see, our homeowners would be placed under a huge burden if Mr. Hart's zoning was granted. The rezoning would change the character of our neighborhood. The proposed rezoning of Mr. Hart's property would change the character of our area. His property shares property, property line with six Sunderland Park properties and six sits very close to others. It's hard to imagine any of the O1 uses in our backyards. Like most subdivided neighborhoods in Conway, ours was created to provide a peaceful residential area. A business would not fit in with the intended residential design. Granted, Mr. Hart's request to rezone his property would change the character of our neighborhood. For these reasons, we ask that you deny his request. This letter was emailed to you all a couple of weeks ago. You saw we had a large group in attendance this evening, and in addition, I have a petition that has been signed by 83 of 92 homeowners requesting the denial of this request. I want to speak to you specifically about a couple of the items in the program. In our letter, we say the property attaches to six homes. Well, I want to show you. This is, this is my fence. That's his building. That's his driveway that drives up. I'm standing on my deck of my pool, taking a photo of that, of that, of that building. Here's another pic- Here's another picture here. Here's the twenty-five feet, nine yards, between my backyard and his, and his business. It's closer to mine and my neighbor's house than his home. Here's another photo from here. Another photo from another neighbor that connects with their property, a pool that looks across. The signs that you mentioned in the other area. This, ladies and gentlemen, is not the spot for an O-one zoning situation. Yes, ma'am? You're more than welcome.
This is, oh, okay, I thought that was signs, but it's.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
This is, this is a neighbor, this is a neighbor that's connecting to his property, connecting over here. This is just by, by design. This is me from my patio, taking a look out at my pool that we call the lagoon. That's how much enjoyment we get out of that. And that's the fence that looks over into the, the area there.
Can I see that?
Time here, so I wanna get back to this. Seventy-five permitted uses. Not only did Mr. Hart make a request to have a new zoning, he made the one that allowed him to do the most with this property, and potentially cause the most harm to our neighborhood. O-one allows seventy-five permitted uses, O-two allows thirty-three, O-three allows twenty-nine. And there's even a caption in O-three that says to have little or no impact on the neighborhood. Ironically, Mr. Hart tells you that you can't locate his business. My office, that I pay dearly for, is across the street from Century Twenty-One. I, too, tell people all the time, go to J. China, look left fifty yards, and you're at AAA Insurance, and they find us. From the Planning Commission website, the following language can be found. Under General Office, the zones also allow development of colleges or other institutions that are incidental to institutions, but not harmful to residential character of neighborhoods. Ladies and gentlemen, any business conducted nine yards from my back fence could be harmful. I have him by possession. The, uh, his, his request for O-one is not compatible with our desires. Mr. Hart is a professional real estate agent, likely why he spoke better than I did this evening, 'cause he may be done anymore, I don't know. And with Heartland Development, one might argue a commercial professional agent as well. I hear that today, today, his purpose is to run a low-key real estate business. But folks, if approved tomorrow, it could be a bowling alley. It could be a doctor's clinic. Under that, what your website shows on the permitted X uses, I called and spoke to Mr. Jason. A nursing home, a garage or parking lot for commercial or public utilities, a funeral home or mortuary. I've lived by Mr. Hart my entire, his entire time of being at the residence, and he is, just as he states, a very good neighbor. But folks, having a business nine yards behind our house is not, in our opinion, in our best interest, respectfully.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pruitt?
Yes. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, with the situation that y'all are dealing with, is there any privacy, as far as privacy goes? Would there be any mediation there? Say, if there was a ten-foot fence, would it make a difference? If there was trees there, would it make a difference? Or is this strictly just?
You, you bring up an interesting point, and Mr. Quinn touched on it as well. When we bought our house, we knew about the, the, the O-two development that has Brick Oven Pizza and El Peryon, or whatever along that line. That brick fence is, I don't know, eight, ten foot tall. Headlights can't come through it. The only noise we hear from that, he's absolutely correct, the only noise we hear from it is five AM when the city happens to have to dumpster. That's my wake-up call. It's time to get up and start the day. Mr. Freeman, we, we haven't discussed that. As, we haven't realized that that's really an option in terms of, from the Property Owners Association. I know that our concern is not what it is today. It's what's it tomorrow? And so, but yes, you, you know, I mean, if, if, if that were our only choice, then we would, then we would obviously have to do something. Folks, you drive right in and, and you just see right over, right over into my yard. I mean, I, I was standing, taking those photos, and our neighbors were standing, taking those photos. We weren't up on a ladder like that.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pruitt? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes.
Wood.
Sorry.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request?
Good evening. My name is Bart Tricky. My wife and I own the property at forty-two-hundred Pagola Place. It's on the south side of the, uh, we share the south side of the lot with Mr. Hart. We have an eight-foot privacy fence between us, and while Mr. Pruitt is definitely closer, I probably have more shared property line of anyone else. In addition to the concerns that Mr. Pruitt outlined, I have a concrete storm drain that runs parallel to my privacy fence along the property line with Mr. Hart. That storm drain floods when, if we ever do get rain again, it does flood. And again, I'm very concerned, not necessarily with the use he's asked for, but anything that's permitted by you agreeing to this request. Any commercial impact, any business, any buildup of that property is definitely gonna impact the flooding in my backyard. So in addition to the concerns that Mr. Pruitt laid out, I wanted to share those with you as well.
Are you in that corner?
Yes.
Is this your house shape?
My, I have the pie-shaped house, right. So my backyard borders Hogan and Mr. Hart's property. Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Tricky? Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Would anyone else like to speak against this rezoning request?
My name is Deana Johnson, and I back up directly against him, and he was kind enough to fix the fence. He is a really good neighbor. But this is a really bad idea, okay? First of all, I would like to say that he is a commercial realtor. He knew about the zoning. He asked for O-one, which had the broadest spectrum of what he could do to us, when he knew all he needed was an O-three. So that kinda brings my concern. Either his credentials are bad, or he has bigger plans than what he says. He spoke of ten to twenty cars back there. I've seen the areas back there. Unless he concretes that whole area, there is no way he can fit ten to twenty cars. He may be able to hit three or four. When you're looking at the pictures, my pictures are the ones with the blinds, because I am in the fireplace. It's really cool. I wanted you to see what I see every morning. If you notice, that fence is not very tall, although it is repaired. Uh, it is not very tall. I will see the business in his backyard. I will see the equipment that he has back there. I'm a widow, and this is my husband's life insurance. And this money is for my children. If you allow him to put that back there, you stole my husband's life and you stole my husband's money, because my property will go down in value. My children are safe back there. If we bring in new things, if you look, the El Patron is O-two. The only thing that's really O-one, okay, is the Wells Fargo investment. That's a two-story building. So do I want a two-story building in my backyard? Would you want it in yours? So please protect us. We didn't expect this. If it was a simple real estate business, I would be happy to build the website for him, so he can work out of his home, because a lot of our city works out of their home.
Time.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Johnson?
I do have a question. So I see a theme coming up, obviously. I imagine more people have some statements they wanna make. But there seems to be an issue around it specifically being O-one. Would it alleviate your concerns if we were to back it down or downsize per se to say O-two, O-three? Because you've mentioned that the other residents, El Patron, or whatever else, Brick Oven, they're O-two.
I will be perfectly honest.
Go ahead.
If he had come forward with what he wanted, okay, like I said, possibly working out of his house, something like that, might have been a little softer blow, but he tried to sneak it past us. And I would say no, because if he's gonna sneak this past us, what's he gonna do if we give him an O-three? If he's gonna sell it to someone else? How am I gonna prevent seeing, when you go outside in my backyard, all of his office and all of his cars? This is a slippery slope, and he wanted a stepping stone.
Let me, let me ask it this way, uh, 'cause I'm not sure my question came across very well. Say if, excluding him, say if another neighbor next to you asks for O-two or O-three zoning requests for a quiet office, would you have had the same concerns?
No. I mean, yes, I would have, because you're still putting something back there that's not a resident. You're still doing the potential of a restaurant. You're changing the landscape of our community, and I've lived there for ten, fifteen years in two different houses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Johnson? All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak against this rezoning request?
My name's Mark Hendrickson. I'm at fourteen-hundred Sunderland Park Drive. I'm drinking behind Mitch, and I will agree, he's been a great neighbor. That's one of the reasons I bought the house that I bought and invested in, is because I've got that beautiful green space right behind my home. I knew I was kinda landlocked. I've got a swimming pool. And like, as Mitch says, I think he's may have had a couple of parties throughout his years there, and, and no, no issues whatsoever with the parties. I mean, I do see the cars, on that rare occasion that he has one, the headlights coming in, the doors locking, the horns honking, and it's not a big deal. I have them, too, but it's a couple of times a year. You hit the nail on the head when you talk about a real estate company. I've been in the same boat as you have. Now, he says he has, what, five or six reps, and on his website currently, he has twelve agents. You know as well as I do, if you've ever purchased a home, you're gonna have to come in and out of that office. I mean, it's inevitable. You're not gonna be doing it remotely. It's just not gonna happen. My, my, one of the pictures is a photo of my home, and again, I'm, I'm a little above him where that fence is at. I'm just standing, standing there. I'm not reaching over, leaning over, and you see the signs that's leaning up against his property today. And that's only my concern, is again, that was an investment for my, my family, and young kids, enjoying the pool, enjoying the evenings, watching TV out back. And real estate isn't, it's not a, 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 a nine-to-five job. When is most of the time you deal with real estate? It's when you and I are getting off work, we're going to look at homes. We're coming in on Saturdays to look at homes, to deal with the realtors, because most of us have full-time jobs that we can't get away from our offices to work. It's, it's when we're trying to enjoy our homes the most, after five o'clock, on that Saturday and on Sunday. I've got a lot of friends in real estate. I got a lot that owns real estate companies, own a business myself. I've got thirty-five employees. And I know you've got to have that base for your customers to come to.
Time.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
I'm on the, I'm next door to Joe.
So you're looking over the wooden fence?
I'm looking directly at his house.
You don't have the brick fence in your backyard, you have the wooden?
No one, no one on our side has a brick fence. The brick fence just goes behind Brick Oven and stops, and goes on the outside of the perimeter. The only wooden fence we have is from his property, down past ours, to, all the way down, whoops, I'm sorry, around the corner to the Tricky's and, and, and. But it's all wooden.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hendrickson?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak against this rezoning request? Seeing none, I'll bring this issue back into committee. What are your thoughts on this, commissioners?
I have a couple of questions for Brian, if I could.
Okay.
First question is, is it, am I incorrect that the applicant could have simply ask for a conditional use to be allowed to do a business out of that shop?
No, that would be nice, but, um, years ago, you could not ask for, well, you can ask for a conditional use permit as somehow before, like the House on Donaghy, if you remember that.
Yep.
Wanted to do that as a mental health office. Um, we revisited that a month or two ago. That was not an option until five, six years ago. The Armstrong, maybe, I lose track of times. Armstrong Insurance Agency is the first one that approached that. We had looked at that a couple of years before, and the council defeated it, basically. But what we did is we allowed for you to ask for a home or, or an office, not just a home office, but we call it restricted office, by a conditional use permit in a residential zone. And I wanted it to be for all zones, all residential zones, but the council at the time chose to leave R-one out of it. So, that's like the House on Donaghy, that's zoned R-two-A, I'm pretty sure. So, um, that's the reason that, that one was, that was a route available to that one, is 'cause it was zoned R-two-A, large lot duplex. So R-one was excluded from that ability to get an office through just solely conditional use permit.
And of course, in this one, since it's a request to rezon, there's no way we can attach any conditions to that.
Correct. So this one's kind of.
So even if we went to like an O-three, we couldn't do just him only, and it doesn't transfer, 'cause you changed it?
No.
And O-three is not what's before us anyway?
Well, now, you can downzone if you want to.
Can I downsize it?
Yes. In, in the past, you know, we, as long as you stay within the same family, like if you're asking for C-three.
Oh, okay.
You can step down all the way to, well, C-two, as low as you can go really with that, but you, C-four, C-three, C-two. So you can stay, step down multifamily, same thing, multifamily, three, two, one, whatever. All the zones are backwards. I don't know why, but our zoning ordinance written in, in prehistoric times, O-one is the highest use and O-three is the least. So anyway, so you can downzone from O-three, O-two, to, wait a minute, O-one, O-two, to O-three.
But we still can get restricted.
But you still cannot put conditions on it, because it's just a zone, is a zone. So, just to further confuse things, because this is an O-one, a single-family home is not allowed in O-one without a conditional use permit, so that's why the following item is a conditional use permit. So if you were to rezon this to O-one, the house would be grandfathered, but the ability to, you know, market that house or make it more legal, you would need that conditional use permit to add that back to it, even though it's there. Now, that's a weird mechanism. It's kinda like the, the tail wagging the dog. Through that conditional use process, if you went with O-one to the single-family home, you can put conditions on it as long as that's desired to be used as a single-family home. I mean, it will be zoned office, O-one. So you could rake the house and put in a doctor's office if you want to. But as long as it wants to be used as a home, those conditions would be applicable. Does that make sense? So, we hadn't got the conditional use permit yet, and may not get there, but, um, so anyway, that, that's the complexity of this thing, and, and if we had conditional use through R-one, this would be simpler, but we don't have that ability.
He only has to have that to live there. He doesn't have to, I mean, if he didn't have it, he could make it an office today, right?
Say again?
Okay. He only has to have the conditional office in order to live in it, right?
The conditional use is for the single-family home use, right. If it were rezoned to office, you would need that.
Then he could just make an office out of it today.
He could not make an office out of it, because it's zoned R-one right now.
No, no, no. If we give him, if we give him O-three, let's say.
If O-three, now, O-three is a weird critter, because O-three, you could have a single family and an office. You can have both.
Oh, my God.
But it's a quiet office.
But you, you remove some of, like, like was pointed out, and I went through the list, and a lot of it's duplication, but there are seventy-five, it appears, or more uses you could do in an O-one by right. Now, a whole lot of those duplication. Probably the worst-case scenario out of that is the thing called commercial recreational facility, which could be a bowling alley. That one's kinda weird, but that's the worst case you could do, probably. Otherwise, you're probably looking at office, and likely the worst-case scenario there would be a high turnover medical office. Something like that could be done in O-one.
What can you allow in O-three?
O-three allows basically quiet offices. It takes the church out of it. I mean, there's lots of things you still can add to it through conditional use. That requires coming back.
But they would have to come back for a conditional use permit.
So by use, when you go through O-three, you're, you're pretty well limiting it to simply office. And O-one, pretty well limits it to that, but there's the things like church, a nursing home, mortuary, the, um, commercial recreational facility. Those are O-one, O-three. Those get removed out of the picture without a conditional use. So basically, you're looking at office, a home. I'd have to go through the list, but it pretty well limits it down.
Put on like conditionals, like we did on, um, the storage facility, where make them do taller pants and landscaping, right?
But if you go, right, I mean, but that's only. Right.
We can't require that.
We can't require anything.
We can't require him to put in a bigger fence to make it O-three?
On, on this request right here, before you write now, is R-one to O-one, so we cannot put any conditions on it. It's simply a zoning.
But if you downsize it to O-three?
If you downzone, it's gonna be O-three. You still cannot put conditions on it.
Not until the conditional use permit, which is the next item.
Well, you won't need that. If you go to O-three, you won't need that.
If you do O-three, you don't have to do the next step.
Yep, you're right.
So we'll make it O-three, and there won't be any conditions that you can put on it.
You can't, if we approve an O-one. You can't, if we approve an O one, and then go on to the conditional use portion of it, you still can't make somebody...
I can't vote for O one.
No.
And that also assumes that the applicant doesn't withdraw the conditional uses as someone has approved.
Yep.
Now, let me just, as a reminder, mention that the motion has to be in the positive, too.
So, one thing that I wanna just kinda clear up, so this is part of Southern, Sunderland Park, correct? Like, it is a lot in there. So, what would make it any different than any other lot there in trying to do the same thing?
I haven't read the, the restrictive covenants on it, but evidently, there's something in there that says Lot ninety-nine is treated differently than the other lots, I'm assuming, cause I, I haven't read them, but, um...
Yeah, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, that was...
I mean, there's, the covenants could be drafted in, in, you know, millions of ways, so I'm assuming that that was removed from that lot, any other conditions?
Yeah, I mean, I know it's...
The rules don't apply to me, cause I'm going to some division. If I'm completely against it, I'll go and make a motion to approve the O one zoning, fully intending to vote against it.
I'll say that.
I would, uh, didn't last time, didn't we go, somebody was applying for O one and we approved an O three? Didn't we do that?
Okay, let me, let me just mention, we've got a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded, so any discussion at this point has to be limited to the motion, any questions about the motion?
Yeah, he could reapply.
So we have a motion for Matthew to approve this rezoning from R one to O one, and Ann has seconded the motion. So do we have any questions about the motion before I call for a vote? Okay, all in favor of approving the rezoning request from R one to O one, please say aye. All opposed, please say aye, or, or no, nay? Are there any abstentions? Yeah, I join with a nay on that, so that, uh, rezoning request is rejected by a vote of zero to nine.
While we're still on this one, do you want to, do you want to move for an O three?
I would make a motion for approving an O three in this, but only if Mitch would tell me to my face that you're gonna build a nine-foot fence back there and add some trees, you know, and give me your word that you'll do that for these people.
If they want one, I might...
We can.
I don't mind doing that, I've talked to Joe about it, you know, you're cutting out the fence.
You know, Mitch, I don't think, guys, I don't think I have the ability to speak for the whole property owners.
Do the best you can, bud.
It's your property.
I'm not, if you want to, I'm not, not the wooden fence, if he wants to put a brick fence, like they got around the other commercial properties, I'm good with it. So I don't have to look at that, I mean, that, that's just my, that's, that's Ryan, because I've got the most, I'm looking at it more than anybody. A wooden fence, you can't build a wooden fence tall enough and quiet enough and door, the seams, lights, and stuff coming through there.
Well, if it's, if it's O three, then we're, we're done with a quiet...
Okay, uh, wait, just a moment, the public hearing section, the public hearing time is, is, has ended, so this is in committee, so...
No, 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 we asked you a direct question.
Yeah.
I would have to do a...
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve O three, requiring Mitch to put in a nine-foot fence and some landscaping.
We can't. Can't.
Yeah, we can't put any conditions on it.
But you give me your word, you'll put in some landscaping and a nine-foot fence.
Okay.
That, that can't be part of the motion, though.
I, I know, I just want that man to give me his word.
Put his word on it.
All right, so, um...
I make a motion to approve O three.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve a rezon, from Brian, a rezon, approve, to rezone from R one to O three.
Can I ask a question before we...
Well, first, I need to find out if there's a second, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, fully, fully intending to vote against it.
Okay, does he have a, okay, now, is there any question about the motion before I call for a vote, or any discussion of the motion?
My question for O three is, is there any limitations to daytime hour, and it's quiet office is what it is? That's what my understanding is, correct?
Yeah, but they're not asking for a conditional use or anything, so we can't, we can't put any restrictions on it as far as hours.
Okay.
My general sense tonight, this is general discussion, since we're discussing the motion in front of us, my general sense tonight is that I, that I share the concerns of the residents in the fact that I'm not sure that the long-term plan is to remarket this and sell that property as something than a residence. And that's my concern moving forward and setting that precedence. Not that, that I don't agree that Hogan has, or that portion has turned into more office space and commercial uses, but, uh, I just don't see the transparency in this request.
Okay, um, go ahead.
I would say hyperbole about the stolen inheritances aside and the other points that are made. Um, I've generally been in favor of things like, you know, the lowest level, especially like this, when it's on Hogan, it's right beside these restaurants, you know, it's a natural commercial area. But in this case, you know, the actual part that's gonna be used as an office is in the very back of it, right against the back neighbors. It's a little island of commercial activity with this nice beautiful house up front. Maybe if this was on, on Hogan, I might could stomach it, but I'm just afraid that we, we, if we change this to O two, or O one, or O three, whatever we change it to, first thing that's gonna happen, the value of that property goes sky-high, bulldozers come in and boom, you've got another strip mall.
Sure.
So, uh, I second the motion, I'm gonna vote against it.
Is, is there any other discussion of the motion before I call for a vote? Hey, all in favor of rezoning, approving a rezoning from R one to O three, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Does anyone abstain? Yeah, I vote with a nay, so that motion is rejected by a vote of one to nine.
One to eight.
Or one to eight, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. All right, so that makes, uh, the next item, one E, a moot point. So, let's move on to item one F, which is the request to, or, well, I'll wait, I'll, I'll, I'll give you all a moment.
Mm-mm, I guess not.
No, cause this one is his business on Hunter, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Oh, she used to be on television, Kendrick.
Oh, is that Heather Kendrick?
That's Heather Kendrick.
Spokesperson for... The tablet was closed.
Yeah, that's Heather Kendrick.
Or Conway.
I think that's who that was, sorry.
The next item on the agenda is a request to amend the Hart Place P U D to include restricted retail at the address two twenty-one to two twenty-five East German Lane. Who would like to begin the discussion in favor of this request?
Oh, my name is Mitch Hart, I live at fourteen oh one Hogan Lane, I'll speak, uh, in favor of this request.
All right, go ahead.
We hand out some, uh, I don't hand out... This is an area that's provided by, again, I'm stolen from the city planning department. Oh, this is Mr. Toby's Dance Ranch, it's on East German Lane.
Thank you.
I think it's on the highway to eighty-six. It is...
Thank you.
I hope most of you are familiar with the facility. Um, we, uh, I own, two thou, Ms. Toby built the Dance Ranch in two thousand and two, and she, uh, she built the Dance Ranch to teach, I own Ms. Toby's Horseback Riding Academy and Dance Ranch, and she, oh, she ran the ranch and, until she, oh, she got, uh, she was diagnosed with, with, uh, with cancer about six years ago, and, and whenever that happened, she was unable to keep her dance lessons going, so she, uh, she then released it to a church and put it up for sale. Um, at that point, we made, uh, we kinda made a decision that, uh, that property was not suitable for her, her horseback riding, which was, became her only source of income, so to speak. The majority of her income now comes from horseback riding, so we put the property up for sale shortly after that, found another location that we felt was suitable for her horseback riding. Uh, I guess this probably happened prior to that, but anyway. Um, in two thousand and nine, you know, I started marketing that property, so she can move, okay? Um, we had it sold to a church, and the church was unable to, to purchase it, then we had it sold to, uh, uh, we had it, we leased it to a church for a long time, and then they moved out, but anyway, we've been marketing parts of the property since two thousand and nine. Um, recently, we had a, a company came along that was willing to purchase the, the ranch and the, uh, the surrounding, some surrounding property. Um, I'd like to, to, uh, oh, I'd like to, to read a little bit about the company that is interested in purchasing the Dance Ranch. Um, it started in two thousand and four when brothers Larry and Bruce Jenkins decided to try to sell Buffalo canoes out of Larry's RV Sales and Service Store. Bruce's wife, Dan, liked the idea so much, he donated her nineteen sixty-eight Mercury Cougar to fund the endeavor. Uh, the proceeds from the sale of her beloved Cougar created the seed money for what the brothers thought would always be just a fun hobby. In two thousand and five, they fell in love with kayaks and believed others would too. They reached out to Perception and talked them to allowing them to become a dealer. They were a bit shocked when the actual, actually said yes, they immediately drove to Memphis to pick their first team, thirteen Perception kayaks before they changed their minds. Two thousand and eight, the canoe and kayak sales had grown and allowed the brothers to leave the RV and service business behind and focus a hundred percent on their efforts on the paddle sports business. In two thousand and swell, two thousand and twelve, O M T C opened up its second store just north in Ozark, Missouri, the store extended all expectations. In two thousand and fourteen, they opened up their third store in Cottler, Arkansas. It's been a fun journey, we look forward to what the next few years shall bring. All right, oh, that's some information off their website, they basically, they're, it's Ozark Mountain Trading Company, okay? That's the business name that they go by, they, um, they have one of the largest inventories of canoes, kayaks, paddling gear, uh, top-quality branding, Dagger Jackson, Hobie, Perception, Mad River Wilderness System, uh, Hurricane, Mc, new canoe boardworks, and assorted, assorted outdoor products. Anyway, please help me in welcoming Larry and Bruce Jenkins. They're here today, there they are, all right. And that is their story, welcome them to Conway, if you would please, all right, thank you. But anyway, all right, so that's their story. Uh, what, what I'm asking for in a rezoning request is, that's the type of business they have. Again, I went through the planning commission to figure out what type of zoning would work for their business and, and purchasing that property, and the response I got was either I one light industrial or C two neighborhood commercial, cause both are, both, oh, they're required to have restricted retail, okay? And currently, we, we are a plan, and I'm talking fast, currently we're a plan and new development, okay? It was established in two thousand and two, it allows horseback riding academy, dance, and twenty-six other things, that include churches, a special event center, things of that nature, okay? So, we're wanting to, it, but it had A one underlying zoning for the entire place, including the surrounding land. How A one is basically about all you can do in A one is basically build a house or have horses, all right? Anyway, so, through my last, since two thousand and nine, uh, we, we want to sell this part of the property to them, okay? My request is to rezone the whole property there to, uh, something different than what it currently is, or add I one or C two or something else to that zoning for the remainder of the property, so we can sell it and have her move to a different location, okay? Uh, no one has been willing to step forward and buy that property as a, as a residence on state highway type scenario, East German Lane. Um, I've marketed it for this long, no luck, I, I just can't sell it to residents, even though we discounted the property in half, it just won't go, okay? So give me something else, as a marketer, as a realtor, give me something else I can work with to help sell the rest of the property. Now, sixteen acres sounds like a lot, but look at what you're looking at there, the sixteen acres includes, oh, six or seven acres of floodway. You see that big thing goes right down the middle? You cannot build, building in floodway plus twenty-five feet. Uh, the rest of her property, there's only one acre that's not included in the flood, floodway or hundred-year floodplain. I'm making excuses for the marketer here, okay? But anyway, it's been a tough sell, right? So, we would love to welcome these folks to Conway, have them buy the building and then be able to market the property that surrounds it, okay? For something other than a house. So, uh, in my request, I, I would ask you to approve the request, and I would be happy to work with neighbors, one including my uncle who's here. Been a long night for neighbors, so, you know, you, oh, you don't everyone have to go through that, by the way, if you don't have to, right? You know, it was ugly, and it was gonna get ugly, and I gotta stand up and take it, but you don't wanna put yourself in that situation, so I wanna get something I can work with without, without making the neighbors upset. We have a lot more, we have a lot more, we're in a P U D here, so we got a lot more options. We can adjust the P U D to reflect some of the things that you were asking about before, if we need to, to make sure the neighbors are happy. So, yeah, most, majority of neighbors are raw land, and they're, they're kinda in the same situation as this property, cause they're, it's gonna be difficult for them to sell their property to someone to build a house to. So, with that, is there any, I would, uh, ask for your support, and are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Hart.
Can I have one of those?
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? All right, would anyone like to speak in opposition to it?
Give just a second.
Okay.
Okay, my name, my name is Mark Elsinger, I live at twenty-nine oh five Antelope. However, the family, this is my sister here, uh, owns the property at three ninety-five German Lane, which is just north of this property. And I totally understand what he's talking about, floodplain, floodway and all that, cause we're in the process of trying to figure out what we're gonna do, uh, since my mother passed away in January. So, I may be back, you know, later on, but I, basically, this is the first time we've got to see, we've heard from Mitch what's going on. Uh, right now, based on what we know, we don't have a problem with what he's wanting to do, so, I mean, I'm not really against. Uh, so I may be speaking out of turn here, uh, so, but, uh, we haven't had a chance to look at this a hundred percent, but I don't see anything right now to stop us from, you know, for against either way. As long, our only concern was, is since the floodway was going, excuse me, since that creek there, and we know that it floods all the time, that nothing was being built there that would back the water up north where our property is at. That's the only concern that we had. Okay, worse than what it already is, okay? Uh, which, based on Mitch, what you're talking about, you're not building or blocking the creek or anything in any form or fashion or anything, so, we don't have a problem, okay?
Are there any questions for Mr. Elsinger? All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this request?
Is, uh... My name, not Hart, Sheeston, Robert. Uh, from what it sound like, I'm, I, it doesn't sound like a big business or anything going in out there. One of my concerns is East German Lane, we have got a lot of traffic on it. I, it, will it handle it? I mean, uh, uh, guys, we're putting this right between two schools, we're putting it right, uh, uh, baby, uh, the take care of babies, it, it, it's, uh, uh, that, that concerns me, I'm, I mean, from the safety point of it. And, uh, uh, one of the things that concerned me about the, the letter I got was, uh, we're talking about these guys ta, getting the, the Dance Ranch building in sixteen acres, well, I, uh, I don't like to, you know, I've got nothing against a Dance Ranch thing going in, it concerns me about the traffic, but, uh, just to open up a sixteen acres and say, okay, whatever happens, happens, I, I, I don't, I, I'm, I'm afraid of that. It, when, when you open, when you, when you zone this side of the road, and I know nothing about zoning, but it, where you can build a store over here, or a Kroger store over here, the other side of the road can be zoned that way too. And whether this is in a floodplain makes no difference, cause the other side of the road is not a floodplain. And, and, uh, then when you do that, it puts the Kroger store by my house, and that's where I'm concerned. The traffic, safety, and, uh, zoning, the whole thing, when we don't know what's going in there, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sheeston? You have something to...
Not for him, can we ask the, the future owners what the hours of operation, or what's the plan for...
Yeah, I would like to talk here from the other...
Yeah, just a minute, though, I have to see if there's any other, would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back into committee and go ahead with your question.
I, I'd like to see if we could talk to the owners, just to kinda get a feel for what the operational hours would be, kind of...
Yeah, what y'all gonna do there exactly? Kind of explain it better.
Well, I'm Bruce Jenkins, 14644 East Highway 62 Garfield. Hours of operation can be 10 to 6.
Is this Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday, noon to 5 on Sunday.
So, it's Monday through, okay.
Yep. We sell kayaks and canoes.
Okay.
And that's it, just a retail store.
And you're gonna do that in the, the existing building?
Correct.
And that, but you're, are you buying this entire?
No, we're just buying the building.
Just the building.
The property that it's on, which is 1.6 acres. 1.6 acres.
Okay, and so, you're gonna continue to try to market the rest of this, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'd like to try, I'll work with something to try to market the rest of it.
So, you're just, you're taking this piece out and selling it to them?
Yeah, that's right.
I got you. I'm with you now.
Y'all aren't manufacturing canoes there?
Oh, no, no, this is store number four for us. This is, we're getting on up there in years, and this is our retirement.
Is it a seasonal type of business?
It is, but we're open year-round, um, November being the worst month of the year. And then we'll start picking back up a little bit for Christmas. And January's flat, but mid-February, it, it peaks, uh, or starts to peak there. So, yeah.
Do you have any plans, do you have any other sort of, uh, outdoor recreational type stuff?
We don't. We've tried clothing and camping stuff at our other stores, and it just doesn't work. So, all of our passions with the boats.
So, if this, if this was approved and limited, just through some sort of paddling and kayak, that, that would work fine?
Yeah, um, retail store, paddle sports store. And then, we sell trailers, um, Yakima trailers, um, to, to hold the boats, to carry the boats, transport the boats. And that's it, yeah.
No, these are not boats that you're strapping to the top of the car?
Some of them are, yeah. We sell the Yakima racks for the cars too. If somebody came in and bought four or six kayaks, sometimes they'll buy a trailer to pull behind instead of putting it on top of the car.
Okay, so how many trailers do you anticipate having on your lot?
Uh, one or two. They're small. They're tiny.
At any given time, just one or two?
Yeah, four, at the very most. We have, um, two stores that house canoes outdoors. One store does not, and so that's outdoor advertising 365. And they're locked up to those trailers.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Y'all gonna float down that creek anyway if it floods?
We'll be the first ones on there.
Yeah, that's a real good idea.
Yeah, and, and free boats, so...
That's why the customers can test drive the merchandise, right?
Well, we did, we did say that, knowing that it was kind of in a flood zone. It's like, well, these are kayaks, they're just gonna float.
Got a way to work.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions from the commissioners for anyone else? Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, what are your thoughts on this?
I would suggest to the commission that, uh, instead of approving restricted retail and all the stuff that could bring in, that we simply approve it as to a paddling type store with assorted trailers and other accessories. I think that would actually take care of the other issues, because I don't think we really need to set hours of operation if you're, all you can do is sell canoes and kayaks, and you can sell canoes and kayaks at 2 o'clock in the morning. So, I think that kind of takes care of everything else. Uh, so I would make a motion to approve with, uh... Brian, would the best way to do this is just add maybe a condition 23 to the 1999? To the easiest?
Um, well, number four says that everything that's been established so far remains the number four requirement condition. So, um, I would just, maybe ultimately is just, if final document plan is a document, triple pages long, that talks about all the stuff that's allowed, um, by right there now or through the process. So, we would just add, whatever conditions you come up with to that list as an amendment at the end. So, does that answer the question?
Yeah.
I would leave those alone here, if we just add these sort of things on that.
Right, since the other, the other's already approved by city council, I'd make a motion to approve.
Well, well, well.
Yep.
I'm not ready for you to do that yet, just a second. So, what you're saying is you are not, you wouldn't be happy with an antique store, bank, barbershop, clothes store? Any of, you, you want to restrict it just to a kayak store?
I'd like to keep the canoe and kayak right now, because if they come back with a bank or something, I think, I think the commission should be able to take a look at it then and see, you know, what, maybe they want to put in some, some hours of operation, things like that.
Okay, but you're, okay, I'm so confused, I'm so sorry. You're selling this 1.6 acres.
Correct.
So, what's it gonna be zoned? It's not gonna be part of this PUD anymore, is it?
Well, I went and said, went to the planning commission, and I, the way I thought we had to do it was, we had to get either a C-2 or an I-1 in order to allow restricted retail. Uh, currently, our underlying zoning is A-1.
If Hart Place isn't gonna own this anymore, why are we... I'm confused about why we're amending their PUD for something that these people are gonna own.
I could've got this wrong, but I thought that's what we had to do.
Well, I mean, basically, you're asking for restricted retail, is what I see going on here.
Okay.
And restricted retail is the retail uses you would get by getting a condition, or, or say, C-2. That's essentially the same uses you get with a C-2 zone. So, the zone is PUD, it's planned unit development. This piece of property with the zone...
So, he's gonna sell it still as a PUD? It's still gonna be a PUD?
The legal description for the property is actually even more than 16 acres, and includes the house in the middle too. So, it's like 19 acres or something like that. Right. But, so you're amending 16 acres worth of this PUD to allow it to have, say, paddle sports as, as it's standing right now. It sounds like you would allow paddle sports on the top piece of property. If you look on the other page where I, we did this graphic that shows, um, the floodway and floodplain, and what's more developable, developable and all that. You're basically amending the PUD, that house in the middle still has the PUD applied to it too. They could do the dance and horse and all that other stuff too, if they really wanted to. So, you're amending the top piece of property and the bottom piece of property to allow them, in order, in, in, beyond the, the horse stuff and all that other stuff that was done, they can also do paddle sports on either one of those two pieces of property.
Okay.
Unless, we change the legal description to something less.
And since, and since it was presented, presented to us as 16 acres, that's why I suggested just canoes and kayaks, and that way we don't have restricted retail on the whole 16 acres.
Right.
Okay, I'm all with you now. I got it.
So, as, as it stands, if, if you were to, you, you could go about it different ways. You could grant it the commercial uses as allowed in C-2, or the commercial uses allowed in I-1, or whatever. But basically, that comes back to the, more or less the same uses we're talking about. But it would be for the entire 16 acres unless you so choose to limit it to something less than that.
Oh, but the other issue, I, I, Brian, when I, when we were doing this, when we were at, I'd asked some questions about, the A-1 was somewhat, oh, I'm not restricted in what size of lots. And I thought we were, I thought as A-1 is the underlying zoning for this thing, that we were held to whatever requirements you would have under A-1, you know? Is that true or not true?
As far as subdivision goes...
I may misunderstood it too, I...
Well, I mean, it's not A-1, it's PUD. So, unless there's something built into the regulation that says it shall be subdivided as A-1, you could divide it into whatever size of lots you want, basically, I mean...
No, there wouldn't be anything restrictive about A-1 that would, that would keep you from subdividing any further. Because there's a good chance, obviously, we're gonna sell this off in pieces, or try to, anyway. Because I, I don't think you want to buy what's left, right? I was gonna take a piece at a time, and, and, oh, I was trying to get something that, that I was, that was friendly enough to that type of neighborhood that would be allowed, that I wouldn't have to come, you know, come bother y'all all the time.
We got nothing better to do.
We got nothing better. Anyway, so what, oh, given that, so what, um, what exactly do we have then, what, um...
Well, you'd still have all these 22 uses, but would add this...
We're adding paddling to the 22 uses, essentially.
That's what we're doing.
Okay.
Or that's what he's doing.
Yeah, that's my motion.
With his motion.
Number four, and then add paddling, kayaking, associated, related.
Retail.
Yeah.
So, un, under that motion, if someone could do it, I don't think it's feasible. They could have five acres of a paddling store.
Sure, because maybe if these guys...
Or 16 acres of a paddling store, but...
These guys buy this place, and, and it's just going, blowing and going, I say, hey, let them have a...
But it's self-regulating in the fact that...
Yeah, y'all keep adding on.
Probably won't be that, but...
And I think that'll give the...
But you cannot do, um, a strip shopping center there. That, unless it's strictly paddling sports strip shopping center, I guess, but... So, just, so that, that's what it seems to me that y'all are talking about passing at this point.
Um, could we add restricted retail to the, like, the whole restricted retail of the whole property?
That's what he's saying. He doesn't want to do.
Okay, so...
Not I-1, but restricted retail, I think would, I think would be more... We had office or anything at all? Give me a shot at something.
There is a thing, now, that when in PUD, basically, you're not hamstrung in this one, it's wide open. You can make any land use you dream desirable available in a PUD. So, it's totally up to y'all how you want to go with it. The request at this point is restricted office, I mean, restricted retail. Again, I think it's in the spirit of downzoning, if you wanted to add office or whatever, but that's some however you want to go at it.
You can already put a commercial trade or craft school on it, what more do you want?
Oh, we all have office in this area, uh, with the pose too, which is what we have now, for my request.
I don't have any of it.
You want restricted retail, right?
Oh, that's what, that's what I'm...
I'm not aware of.
No, but I'm, for the rest of it, you want office, or you want restricted retail?
Uh, either or, both would be best. I'm trying to get, as broad as it won't affect the neighbors, it won't hurt the neighbors. Oh, I, and, and, and that's my uncle there, I don't want Kroger, by the way. I don't want to put something big, big over there that would, that would bother him, because he's, I don't want to call him my favorite uncle here. I can't say that in public, that'd be on the record, but he's a nice guy, so...
Okay, um, Matthew, you...
Well, I don't know what else, in restricted retail is my only issue.
Is there anything else we could add that would allow me to sell the property? Because it's not gonna sell for a house or as an A-1, just, I've been at this since 2009.
They would just have to come, they'd have to come back before us.
You what?
They'd just have to come back before us and, and ask for a rezoning if you were to sell it.
Same thing that you're doing tonight is what, you're saying if he sells it outside of...
Right.
Okay, Matt...
Because with the schools being that close in proximity, I just don't see, it's just blanket granting, yeah, granting.
Well, I think that, that if we blanket granted it too, I think that defeats the entire purpose of PUD. I mean, get the PUD to begin with, it's, you know, I have this piece of property, I have something special I want to do, and I'm willing to submit it to the PUD process, knowing that I'm gonna get a lot of restrictions put on me. And I think that if we just now, well, we're just gonna essentially rezonate through PUD, I just, I just, to me, it goes in the spirit of PUD.
Yeah, you can get back to your motion now, I'll shut it.
Please.
Alright, so, yeah.
Uh, make a motion to approve with that condition number four, and then as a condition that the entire property can be used for kayak, canoe, paddling type store, retail operation with, uh, kayak and canoe only operation with, uh, to use to sell trailer.
What do they call it, paddle sports?
Paddle sports.
I think paddle sports.
So, you want to add that as a 24th, or 23rd item under allowed uses, plus you want the one, number four, that one condition?
I have no concerns with hours of operation or limiting it to the, a certain, or the property or a certain applicant, because it's such a near use.
Okay, we have the motion from Matthew. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a second from Justin. Is there any discussion, any question about the motion before I call for a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All, is anyone opposed? Does anyone abstain? I vote with the ayes, so that passes nine to nothing.
Almost there.
One more item on the agenda tonight, that's 2017 Planning Commissioner nomination and selection schedule. So, um, let me ask, um, do we have two finalists who are ready to send to the city council?
It was Ward 1.
It is Ward 1?
Yes.
Delancey was in charge of this one.
Who was Ward 1?
Arthur.
Yes. Our, so we will have someone that fills Ward 1.
Yeah. So, Arthur Ingram and Brandon Royal are our top two.
Arthur Ingram and Brandon Royal?
Royal, R-U-H-L.
Okay, Royal.
Are top two.
They...
Are either of them here tonight?
Mm-mm.
No, okay.
They fill Ward 1 and fill a spot in Ward 3.
Okay.
So, so, Arthur's Ward 1 and...
Correct. I checked with our experts.
He's fact-checked.
Uh, Matthew and I, of course, are abstaining from this since we're not gonna be around after next month, but, uh, are there any questions from the rest of you, or any concerns, before we forward these to the city council?
No.
No, we were all set in there.
Alrighty. Sounds good. Well, is there any other business that any commissioner wants to discuss tonight?
Mr. Chairman, there being no further business, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second from Wendy.
Who's gonna contact the people that interview you?
Wendy.
Hey, all in favor of approving the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed or any abstention? I believe that's unanimous, not a hint of it.
So, Delancey gets to call the winner, she has to call the loser.
You get to call the losers?
No, 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 no. I'll call my two losers.
Well, that's all the left.
That's true, duh.
What about all the rest of them?
I already contacted all mine.
Did we contact the people that we interviewed?
Okay, I can always...
How are you bringing it to her?
The significant others.
Ah, gotcha.
You didn't show us, though?
So, do I need to contact them tomorrow, or...
She's so funny, because when we went to Fabri-Hangar Leadership...
I was predicting an hour and a half maximum.
Only to find out that we were not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you and your significant other just buy this house? Awesome.
Alright, well, one more, it's hard to believe, Matthew, you get five, five...
Oh, wow, you've been all over it.
I guess because you only meet once a month, and it just, the time seems condensed.
Well, and especially this last year, just like they bothered to go a lot quicker.
Yeah, we used to, in 2012, and I guess maybe into 2013, we had some marathon meetings, our first...